Good afternoon and welcome to the special meeting of Nicodotus Independent School District. Board of Trustees. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that notice of this meeting has been legally posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Board Member TD Howard was unable to attend today's meeting. Please remember that items do not have to be taken in order shown on the agenda and please join in us in turning off your cell phones or switching into silent mode. At this point, on the agenda, A and B have been taken care of from last night. So we're going to, at this point, I think, aren't we kind of going to be doing C, D, E, and F all kind of as...
C, D, E, and F will all be together.
All kind of together as one.
They're all together.
Oh, C and F? Is there an F? Sorry, am I missing it? Oh, that's under the executive session, not the actual agenda.
Right.
Right. Right, under it, but it still has to be addressed at some point in time. So at this point, I'm going to turn this meeting now over to, do we, is it super, is it interim anymore?
I think it's still interim.
Okay, we'll turn it over to the interim superintendent, Ms. Doughty, to go over those areas.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight to hear this. I want, you can all hear me correctly because I want everybody to hear all the statements I have to say. As you are aware, Carpenter Elementary is in its fifth year of improvement required status, as you always hear us call IR. A turnaround plan was created in 1516, designed to produce significant and sustainable gains and achievement. The turnaround plan requires periodic reporting to TEA of student assessment data. Benchmark scores for this year indicate that the anticipated gains will not occur and that Carpenter will move into its sixth year in IR status. While we technically, when they came out, when TA came out last year and said you technically have two full years to finish this, to pull out of IR, the commissioner is strongly urging that we act at the local level to change course for those students for 1718 school year. On April 27th, Mr., I started my spring break with this, Mr. A.J. Craybill, Deputy Commissioner, will be in, I'm sorry, on April 27th, Mr. A.J. Craybill, Deputy Commissioner, will be in our district and will lay out for the board and community the various options that we have for increasing student outcomes in this district. Those options will span from least to most aggressive and will be designed to impact the district as a whole. We know for a fact that regardless of the options selected by this board, a revamping of Carpenter will be a component. The scores are simply too low to move out of IR status in one year. It is my recommendation tonight, therefore, that the board take the steps necessary to allow for repurposing of Carpenter Elementary from a pre-K5 to a PK1 campus for the 1718 school year. This will require that students in grades two through five be served on the remaining elementary campuses, resulting in alterations to transportation, facilities, and of course, staffing. The goal is to give Carpenter every chance to succeed by rebuilding it one grade level at a time until it is back to a PK through five reconfiguration. I am putting into place new leadership. Last week, a new principal was hired as recommended by TEA. Dr. Jackie Briggs Vaughn, they did not recommend her, they recommended that we had to change the leadership. That was one of the issues. So, Dr. Jackie Briggs Vaughn was selected from a committee here in the district. She has a proven track record in public education. I agree with TEA that campuses should be led by experienced leaders that have a history of improving student outcomes. She will lead the new campus. Because Carpenter will no longer be a testing campus, it will lose its IR status. That's the promise that we get, that they will reset the button and it will no longer be IR, it will start over again. Testing and accountability ratings will kick back in once third grade is returned. Because the majority of our professional staff at Carpenter employed under a term contract, a repurposing will require a program change, reduction in force. This is what is driving our timeline. I would love to wait, but the problem is the contract issue. I've asked Kelly to review with you the board's reduction in force policy and to explain the actions required by the board and why the timeline is so critical. Kelly?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Mrs. Doughty, I would ask you to help me out by putting on the wall what kind of the board's policy at DFFV Local for this audience meeting. And if you don't mind, as board member, I'd also, please, with Houston bringing copies of the policy, if you'd like to take notes and write on top of it or sort of mark it up as we go along. There are several things I'd like to point out. Riff, to a certain extent, is a very commonly understood term, whether inside or outside the school context, but the reality is, it is a term of art for education, as we know it, and it will be applied to your particular situation. A couple initial points. Number one, your board policy at DFFV Local is a standard TASB model contract. So what you see in front of you is, in fact, the exact text that comes to every district recommended by TASB. You can tweak it, alter it, amend it, change it, but this, in fact, what you have is the version that TASB recommends and that a majority of districts have in Texas, so I want to point that out. Secondly, as we just kind of get started walking through the policy, the very first sentence I want to reemphasize to you, because I know we've talked about this in the past, this particular policy applies only when it is required to non-renew a term contract teacher. As Mrs. Doughty just indicated, there will be some teachers at Carpenter who may end up losing their job because you simply will not need as many full-time teachers to educate these approximately 175 students who will now be filtering into your other elementary campuses. And to the extent those educators possess a term contract, this is the policy that applies. If you have an educator who's under a probationary contract, or if you need to eliminate at-will employees who may be assigned to Carpenter, this is not the policy that applies to them. This policy applies only to your term contract teachers. In contrast, with regards to the probationary contract, as well as your at-will, your superintendent will retain the authority to either make those decisions or make recommendations to you on those decisions at a later time. In the definitions section, you'll see the definition of program change. That is the first recommendation or request that Mrs. Doughty will have for you tonight, is that the board actually take action to declare a program change. Again, it's a term of art for education, and you've got a really long definition here because what the definition does is it lays out several examples for you. Program change means an elimination, curtailment, or reorganization. It could be of a program, a department, the school operation, curriculum, and then it gives several examples. It could be a change in schedule. It could be restructuring the way you deliver your curriculum. It could be reorganizing your staffing patterns. And so, it's any type of reorganization of either a program, or a campus, or a department. And then, of course, non-renewal, again, is defined, and that's when, at the end of the school year, typically this time of year, and we'll talk about the deadlines here in just a moment, those who are in the ending point of their term contract with the district, the board either elects to renew or non-renew for the following year. General Rounds, that's your first motion. You'll be asked to declare a program change, which will include the elimination, curtailment, or reorganization at Carpenter Elementary. The second motion is where we get a little bit more specific, and that's where the board will be relying on the administration and the administration's recommendations on just how the educators believe it best to serve the needs of the students at Carpenter. Is it a complete elimination of the campus altogether as you know it, or will you simply be changing particular grades or programs that are offered there? Again, you have in your policy or several examples of the employment areas that can be identified for change. And so, what your superintendent will be doing tonight is recommending to you what those program areas are that she's asking the board to identify, and in fact, this will be a responsibility of the board. The first motion will be to declare the program change. The second motion will be to identify the program areas. Likely based on her comments, you're going to see a recommendation that certain grades be identified as program changes, and you see that as number one, as an example, elementary grades. You may hear about special programs, you may hear about counseling, different types of support. As you can see on the second page, even number 10, you can declare a program change by closing an entire campus and electing to serve those students elsewhere. That is not the recommendation that's being brought to you tonight, but that would be an example of a program change by closing a campus. And then, of course, number 13 is just a general catch-all, any other contractual positions. The superintendent also has discretion to combine any one of these program areas. For instance, she is likely going to be making a recommendation that it be identified specific to Carpenter and not any other campus. That's not to say that she may not come back with you at some point in the future. She mentioned a meeting scheduled for April 27th where additional options will be presented to you as a board. You may decide at that point in time that a different or a broader program change is necessary to serve these kiddos, and so you may, at that point in time, come back and add to your program change or revise it. So you can definitely combine and change. What happens after tonight is once you identify the program areas, you're in essence giving the superintendent a charge. And what she must do at that point is then take all of the employees who fit into those program areas, or what I will call pools. For instance, if you were to identify second, third, and fourth grade, maybe fifth grade, all as individual pools, as program areas, then what your policy tells you on page two of four is that the superintendent is then to apply your criteria to all the employees that fit within those pools. And so, for instance, if it's determined that you must eliminate one second grade teacher from, maybe you have three or four second grade teachers on that campus, but you're going to keep three, and you need to eliminate one, then you apply this criteria, and you'll see you have five criteria listed. You apply them in order, all right? So the policy says you apply them sequentially until such time as you see a clear break and no need to go further. So the first thing you would do is you put all teachers in that pool together, and you would first compare their qualifications for their current assignment. Are they all equally certified? Are they all equally qualified for that assignment as a second grade teacher? Again, hypothetically, if the answer to that is yes, then you move to the second criteria because you didn't get an elimination from the first comparison, you move down to the second. The second is generally used in your breaks, is in comparing performance. And so, you'll take the most recent appraisal instruments, and you'll compare those appraisal instruments to see if there's a significant break, or at least a break significant enough to your superintendent to believe that you have seen the need for one to be eliminated at that point. If they're too substantially similar at that point, then you go to the third criteria and so forth. And so, you have in your local policy, as I mentioned, the same five criteria that most school districts have in the state of Texas for implementation of a reduction in force. Some might think that it should be seniority, but you'll note that seniority is actually number five. So, seniority is not going to be the factor on which you determine which teachers get to retain their positions and which teachers must go, but rather, it's likely going to be performance. Once the administration has identified the teachers who are to be eliminated as a result of your reduction in force policy or application of your policy, then they meet with those educators and they explain how they apply the criteria and how that particular candidate is identified for elimination. That employee, of course, will always have the opportunity to apply for any vacancies that exist in the district. If there are no vacancies, that employee can submit a resignation. If neither of those things occur, then we will come back to you at the April 20th board meeting, and you will have to propose non-renewal. The process is exactly the same as it is in a performance-based non-renewal. The reason for non-renewal simply is a program change reduction of force as opposed to performance. So the board proposes the non-renewal of any employee who's been identified for elimination and has not been able to either find a position elsewhere or has not elected to resign. And then, again, because it's the same policy that we follow as we would with a performance-based non-renewal, the employee can either request a hearing or not request a hearing, and then the board will have to come back and act on the non-renewal. And at that point is when the decision will be made to end the employer relationship or the 1718 school year. And at that point is when the decision will be made to end the employer relationship for the 17, 18th school year. The next section, consideration for available positions, is a very important one. And I think that it's probably going to be asked more than any other, is what preference are we going to give to our Carpenter teachers in filling vacancies? And so I wanted to make sure that you're aware that you do have reference in your policy to consideration for available positions. And basically what it says is that once you've identified your program areas, you've applied your criteria, you've identified the candidates who are going to be subject to the reduction in force, if those individuals, number one, it says those individuals do have the affirmative duty to apply for positions. So there is an affirmative responsibility to watch on the HR website, look for vacancies, and submit those applications, and follow whatever procedures that you currently have in place right now for requesting transfers from one campus to the other. So they have that duty and responsibility. But if, at the time of a hearing, you have outside candidates who have expressed interest, but you also have RIF candidates, you must give preference to the RIF candidate if they are the most qualified internal applicant at the time of the hearing. So you do have that provision in your policy that pertains to giving preferential treatment to your RIF candidates prior to any decision to non-renew. And then I think the last thing I would point out again is just that, from that point forward, the hearing request, the timelines, the decisions required of the board, all consistent with your board policy pertaining to performance-based non-renewals, including the option that the board has to either hold and hear those non-renewal hearings itself or delegate to a third-party attorney, you would have that option as well. What questions might you have about policy application?
You did a great job.
Okay.
All right. I'm therefore asking, and I've got several comments here to make. I'm therefore asking the board tonight to implement a program change for the 17, 18th school year that will allow for the elimination, curtailment, or reorganization of Carpenter Elementary. I'm further asking that the board identify the following program areas to be affected by the reduction in force. Carpenter Elementary first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers. Carpenter Elementary interventionist, behavioral, reading, and math, counselor, and CIC, and Carpenter Elementary Special Education Resource Inclusion. I'm asking that this action be taken tonight so that we can prepare a plan, I want you to hear this clearly, plan for implementation. While we will hope for the best, we must prepare for the worst. My goal is that, let's all pray that these scores come in in June and they're great because then we can reverse the order. But I can't wait till June to put this plan, a plan together, and the timeline of the contracts. Subsequent to tonight's board meeting, I will be working with Mr. Martin and our campus principals to identify the number of staff necessary to service the approximately 175 students impacted by this decision. Undoubtedly, we will be required to eliminate some full-time teaching positions as some students can be absorbed in existing classrooms. Once the numbers are solidified, we will then apply the RIF criteria to those educators who fit into the program areas identified to determine employees subject to reduction in force. Those identified will be provided the option to resign, or we will be required to bring them before the board in April with a recommendation proposed non-renewal based on program change and reduction in force. Remaining teachers will be placed at existing campuses. Of course, all staff have the ability to apply for existing vacancies. Once we have a handle on the number of teachers necessary to serve our Carpenter 2 through 5 students, I'll be meeting with our campus principals and Ralph Leroux, Director of Facilities and Operations, to discuss facility changes to accommodate the additional classrooms on the elementary campuses. I will also be working with Stacy Lamkin, Director of Transportation, on transportation, and the need to devise a plan for busing our 2 through 5 students. We will be reviewing the best way to realign these students with our other campuses. We want to provide the least amount of disruption possible to these families, and we want to be as efficient as possible with our resources. This will be a priority as we continue to develop the plan over the next few weeks. Looking forward, the goal is to roll out a proposed staffing and transportation plan to the board no later than the week of May 8th, 2017. We would like to schedule at least one town hall-style meeting at Carpenter Elementary to discuss proposals and options with the community because we acknowledge the impact this will have on our community and we value their feedback. We absolutely want to inform our parents and community of this process and believe that their feedback is critical to developing a strong community for the school district. Test scores will be released in early June. If, for some reason, the scores at Carpenter are sufficient to support a PK through 5 campus for the 17, 18th school year, this program change can absolutely be undone. We simply will not have the liberty to non-renew at that time should the scores be deficient and we do not have the financial resources to carry teacher overses, so we must act now. I would like to explain local control. I've been dealing with that now for the last month, what this local control really means. And provide some parameters for your consideration. If I had local control, this would be my plan. It'd be for us to lay in place what is necessary on each campus, and I think that is what we're doing, and leave us alone for three years. If you'd just get out of our way and leave us alone. But that is not an option for local control. At this point with NACADOTUS ISD and TEA, I was advised by TEA on Monday, March 13th, that the Commissioner of Education will not allow Carpenter to move into his sixth-year IR status. I have continued talking with TEA leadership to review and discuss the options available to NACADOTUS ISD and Carpenter Elementary. Again, these options were presented to me by TEA for local approval and consideration. And we'll try to go through each one of these options. I was told that some of the options include to restart the number so that they're not an IR. I'm not saying I like any of these, I'm saying these are the options given. Close Carpenter Elementary and repurpose the facility. Do nothing and relinquish the control to TEA. Creation of an, and I called about this because we talked about this last night. Creation of an in-district charter school. This would require TEA approval, and all criteria below would have to be met for consideration. It actually is the same thing as bullet one, close and repurpose the facility, it's no different. Approval would require closing the campus and reassigning all students and staff. Restarting the campus with only one grade level, and add a grade level back each year until it's again PK through 5. Hire a third-party charter school which specializes in the redesign of IR campuses like TNTP and MVA. So it's actually the same as the first bullet. There would be still no guarantee for approval, and it would be highly likely that we would not be approved. Campus reset, I was asked this last night, I think Russell, by you, to find all options for campus reset, give us all options you have out there. Well, I was told today by TEA, the campus reset criteria for this option is currently under development with the commissioner and with a committee, and that the commissioner will have to approve that list of other options. And it's not an available option at this time. Okay.
That's ridiculous.
So that's local control. All right, so. So when TEA says local control, please understand our definitions may vary. I have tried to be transparent and accommodating with our staff at Carpenter Elementary and our principals, as this information has become known, to address their concerns and fears. I believe this is the best choice to keep Carpenter Elementary as a part of NACADOTUS ISD and not relinquish control of our school. We can do this, the road ahead will be difficult, but I believe in this district and this community, and we can do this. But right now, what we're faced with is that we actually have to at least do this part of it so I can start creating a plan in case the scores do not come back. And remember, when they said two years, I truly believed last year, I don't know if I would have believed that, but two years meant two years. I had two full years to get out of IR. What they say is a clause is within the, where is Kelly? A clause is within House Bill 1842 that says, yes, you have two years, but TEA has the right to come in anytime they want. So when they say improvements, what they're going to look at is in June when our scores come in, they're going to say, okay, did Carpenter make enough gains this year that if we applied the same gains next year and hope that they make those, they would be out of IR by the end of 18? If not, they take control. So it's a gamble on trying to decide which way to go. And that's what we're doing right now. We're trying to decide, my goal is that we keep Carpenter as Carpenter. But I've got to wait till the scores come in. We have to look at those scores and decide, based on these, is it enough? Or are they still so low that we can't pull out in one year? Because if we gamble on that, then we lose control of the campus. So that's what we're faced with tonight. So that's why this has come up, and that's why we have to start a process.
I have so many problems with this on so many different levels.
Amen, amen.
I do too.
First, I want to say that I have absolute confidence that the plan that we've been working under
Will work.
will work, and it's the right plan.
I do.
That the changes that we've been implementing and the changes that were being implemented over the coming months was going to make a significant impact on the quality of education at Carpenter. The idea that TEA can come in here at the ninth hour and change the rules is absolutely appalling to me. We were told in November that as long as we were showing progress,
Right, that's right.
progress, that we would be okay and that we would have the two-year timeline to continue. All they ask is for us to show progress. And then for them to come back on us, or at least for me as a board member, last Thursday night and say, no, you have to be out of IR.
That's right. Because Pam, I can also add to that, when I, there is a seventh-year IR campus in the state, which they're doing the same thing too. When I called TEA and asked them and said, and I was speaking to Angela Foote at the time, that basically the legislators are coming down on TEA to say, we cannot believe you've allowed school districts to go into sixth and seventh-year IR, so now we're not going to allow that, and y'all have to do something about it. But that's now, that wasn't last November, so they've made those changes. I honestly believed that if we made good progress, I mean, good progress over the next two years, we could either be out of IR, or we would be so close that they would allow us the same thing to go into that next year because we're showing such gains. But that's not been given to us. It's been changed in the middle, to me, in the middle of the road.
Well, and then for them to sit there and tell us that this is a local decision. And I'm, board members, help me understand that. How is this a local decision?
Because when you decide it the way they're forcing you to decide it, they're going to say it was your decision, even though it wasn't. So, but in all honesty, we have been, we have been told so many things and represented so many things that have changed and turned out, they changed the rules of the game as the game has gone on in their minds, and right here at the end, which has really been unfair. And that last bit you're telling me from my inquiry yesterday, that they're saying, oh, well, we don't have that list developed, and we, I mean, that's nothing but a power play and a bullying aspect on this school district, really.
Because I have no idea when that list will be available.
Well, and they may already have it, they're just telling you that to try to force your hand, I think.
I am concerned about what's best for these kids, all of our kids. And one of the things that we have preached since June is consistency. And consistency in their lives. I'm having a really difficult time wrapping my head around how ripping them up off the campus, the only campus they have known.
A community.
And moving them and splitting them up across campuses across our district, how is that beneficial to the student?
And I believe Reverend Irwin, you were with me when I talked to A.J. Craybill on the phone.
Right.
I stressed all of these components. I've talked so many times to him, I can't even remember what day. But I stressed the components that we know what makes a great school campus. Good leadership, strong teachers, commitment to the campus, the whole, you know, good initial instruction in the classrooms, those things that we're implementing, that we're putting in place. But you cannot make changes and see those results, like total out of IR and bring a campus to that level in one year even. It's just impossible. You can't pour the knowledge or all this stuff into a kid's head, you've got to teach them along the way. So I know what we're doing and what we're laying in place for campuses is the best thing to do because I guarantee you, if they came in, I would love to know what they would do that's any different other than closing a campus, putting all the kids, mixing all the kids up in the district, and they would do that. They would literally revamp this whole district, shuffle the kids, start over. My message to them when we talked the other day is, what good is that for the kids? That's the very thing that causes so much confusion, especially in your high-risk districts. High-risk districts, structure for students, consistency for students, good instruction for students, that's what brings them out, not continued confusion and mix-up. And that's the worst thing you can do for students in at-risk situations. However, you're dealing with state lawmakers who may or may not be educators, and I'm just going to say this for the record, that have to do with other things called money at the issues, and charter schools, and vouchers, and so forth. And these all come into play with what the politics in Austin. The politics in Austin to me are not about what students, and I'm saying that. It's not about students, it is the end result of what they want. And that may vary with different issues. But to me, I know as an educator for 41 years, and y'all know from what we've worked with, what's best for students. But when you talk about local control, like I said, to me, I want local, if they want me to say what local control is, give us, get out of the way and give us what we know is going to work, and give us time. And that's what they're not giving us, is the time.
What's the ramification if we decline their options and we say, look, we have a plan in place, we believe in our plan, what's the ramification of that?
They would come in and take over the board, and this has been told to me, you know, they will take, they will dismiss us, and they will run the district themselves, and they will make the changes themselves. It's basically what they said is either do it or we'll do it.
So we're hostages again.
So there's your local control.
Well, and in an environment where they're talking about increased use of school vouchers and charter schools.
So what I've got to ask tonight is at least allow us to start this process so at least I've got something on the board, because that's the only option I've been given outside of, I mean, it all comes back to that same option, no matter what, or give over control.
What, let me ask that, because I know this is a complex process, and I want to make sure that I completely understand. What are we, if we were, what are you asking us to commit to tonight? What does this action commit us to?
Kelly, with the RIF, what's the action tonight?
This motion that the administration is recommending, what does it commit us to?
At this point, it's basically giving the superintendent direction to begin her homework assignment, which is to work with Mr. Martin, work with, you know, your transportation director, your facilities director, to put a plan in place.
Plan B.
Yes, Plan B. You are not committed to anything until we get to that point where we're ever so close to the 10th day before the last day of instruction, which your district hits about May 15, 16, 17, something like that. And so, within the first two weeks of May, you have to propose non-renewal and give notice to those teachers. And so that's why the holdoff is until the April 27th meeting with Mr. Craybill. In the event that he has some other more attractive option, no trigger will be pulled before that time likely. In the event that there is some other option or he recommends some alteration. But you must act prior to the 10th day before the last day of instruction to propose non-renewal. That's what you have to do. So by tonight's motion and action, you're basically giving that charge to the superintendent to come up with a plan that would change the configuration of Carpenter from a PK through 5 to a PK 1 or a PK 1 through 2, or whatever it is you decide to do. You're giving her a charge to come up with that plan and to make it happen so that when the scores are issued in June, all the work's been done, and you're not playing that job.
All right, so in layman's terms, we would be directing her to do further research and planning. This is not committing ourselves to any changes.
Correct. But part of that planning will of course be applying the criteria
Of the ref.
and having those conversations with the employees so that as a professional courtesy, they at least know that if I'm one of four teachers and the board acted to identify third grade as a program area and I'm one of four teachers, I need to, I would like to know as soon as possible that I'm on the bottom. And that it's going to be me if this plan has to go through so that I can at least be looking for vacancies elsewhere in the district that I have certification for, or maybe even in a neighboring district. So it's giving the teachers the ability to take control over their own careers as soon as possible as a professional courtesy as well.
And how, and, and let me ask this because to me, which I totally understand and respect, but the fear that that incites in me is that we're going to have a lot of trouble recruiting teachers to that campus.
Yes and no. I mean, yes, you're right. It's just that this is the hand we've been dealt. And I've got, I've been recruiting hard myself and I've got some committed to that campus that are excellent teachers that are going to come back and help try to fix the situation. However, what it does, like Kelly was saying tonight, if we don't take some direction, I want teachers and employees to know in time so that if they need to go find other jobs, they've got that. But also not only that, it impacts my other campuses. I've got to be able to get a staffing plan together so I can say to the other principals, "This is what Plan B looks like." So we can't, we can't go out and hire. You see, it binds us to hiring and it binds us to all that if I don't move on something. Because we don't want to get way down the road and impact them the other campuses and make their situation worse too. So it, it's just, it's a horrible timing issue with contracts running up against what their option they're giving us.
And that's another huge concern is, I mean, do we have time to adequately plan for this?
We do.
They've pulled this on us literally at the twelfth hour.
We do for the hundred and seventy-five, but it, I gotta act now. I mean, I've got to at least get on the road to having a Plan B. And I've talked already to Stacy, the transportation, Ralph for, for facilities, and I've talked to the other principals about what may occur. And that we're, the main issue is staffing. I've got to be able to get with them to roll those numbers forward based on an even distribution of students throughout the district. And looking at scores of students and everything, so to get that laid out so we know where we have room in classes, we've already identified that, and where we would need to add classrooms and if spaces on the campus. That's what we're in the process of doing and we've got to get that done. The last thing I want to do is in June, when this comes in, for them to go this or this, and we don't even have a Plan B ready, and then we have, I, I don't want that.
You have to plan.
I want to try to keep control of our campuses for Nacogdoches ISD and not relinquish control because they're going to do the very same, they're going to do the very same thing.
I'm, I wanted to say that after speaking with A.J., I, I'm just, I'm afraid to gamble with the school now because he, he made mention of a six-year IR campus that they have just closed. And I, I, I don't want to gamble with Carpenter from that perspective. I think it'd be safe if we followed the plan and then hopefully every year add back a grade. We, we would ensure that we'd keep Carpenter in the community.
Yeah.
But the other way,
They're going to close the door.
we're going to be gambling.
We may still be. At least this way we have somewhat of control until it gets
I mean, he explained.
to that point where they can change.
He explained that closure also means that they, in, in the case of one campus. Now, if it's more campuses, that's different for Nacogdoches, but in one case of one campus, they can lock the doors, put a chain around it for one year.
Send the kids.
And, and you're going to distribute everybody. So I'm trying to avoid the worst of the worst and try to have some kind of Plan B that we could live with to keep control of our own campuses. I don't want to relinquish control to TEA because I think what they're going to do and put in place, I have to question whether it's as good as what we do. Because I, I'm, I'm not convinced that it is. Because they bring in a lot of sometimes new untried things and they just implement and, and move the kids anyway. And I, anyway, I'm not, you know.
I, I would like to say one thing that, we pointed fingers a lot at TEA.
Yeah.
But having been on the board for five years, I think there's three fingers pointing back to me and the board and maybe a learning experience for the people, these new people that are out there that are going to come to the board. We have some responsibility. Board and the superintendents. We've not had a very good continuity for multiple superintendents and boards for a number of years. So there's a, a lot of members on this board that are new that have no responsibility towards that at all. This board has worked. I can't tell you how diligently this board has worked and have been in harmony. I won't say we don't have our arguments, but I will say they, it's, it's behind closed doors and it's nice. When we walk out, we're, we're, we're of one voice. And I, I, for the first time, I, I feel like we have a board and a superintendent on the same page. And it's nice. So, yes, we, TEA's given us a bad, bad rap and, but we kind of put ourselves in that predicament. So we, there's some responsibility that's got to come back to us on that. That's just, I, I hope that this will continue and we're going to have three new board members and whoever that happens to be, it's going to be imperative that those three board members come in and work with us and work with the superintendent and, and be in harmony of what we've got to do. Because I can tell you this impacts those campuses. Because we, we've had a revolving door in the instruction office because of leadership issues. And we've had a revolving door at Carpenter. We've had some good people there, but we put them in there with little or no experience. And we've kind of put people in, in positions where it was a no-win situation. So, and I've been here the longest, so those three fingers are coming right back at me.
Can I also say that when we call, talk about TEA, they only enforce what's been handed down. And so you're falling back on your legislators to do something about it because they're the ones making the laws and TEA, and had, their charge is to enforce it. So, um, that's where a lot of this is coming. I mean, that's who makes the rules and the laws. So,
I, I don't think that they didn't mean it when they said we'd have two years. I think the goalposts were moved on them.
Yeah, yeah. I, I agree. Because in talking to TEA, that that's the pressure they were coming down with now, was that they were not going to allow a sixth or seventh year, how dare that they'd been doing that? But at the same time, that's what we were told and if we made enough growth. And so that, that, that has all changed. Or at least it's changing as what we just have had come to us in the last couple of weeks. So it's not pleasant.
Well, at some point in time, there's consideration to be given to draw a line in the sand and buck the system if you knew the outcome. And I do have some questions for our, our lawyer along those lines, probably best in executive session. But, but, you know, at some point in time, you need to evaluate standing up for what's right and evaluate those potential repercussions and what you can do to, to handle it that way. And, and I, so I have some questions for Kelly along those lines. And I think in doing so and talking about that, I'd just say that I know the ultimate consideration is, no matter what your evaluating is, is what's best, what's in the best interest of the kids and, and the outcomes that we want for them. But I, I think we owe it to, to take an evaluation at that side of it also.
Any other discussions? We're going to be a little unorthodox tonight. We have some ti, is there anybody that'd like to say anything? We'll listen to you. Or questions?
Sure, Andrew.
Um, from my understanding, a lot of the teachers at Carpenter have already been told that they need to, they will be, they'll have to resign and reapply with the district. And so what I'm hearing now is that they have options. And if there's already, there's not a Plan B in place yet, why have they been instructed to do those things? If we're here to learn about Plan B, why have the staff at this hall already been done?
I'm not for sure, you know, who you're talking about, but there's different, there are the regular contracts that individuals may have not been renewed on, on performance. That's a whole different thing. So I, I don't know if that's some of that, that they have been, there are people in the district that have been non-renewed based on performance, not anything to do with this.
So in all of the second through fifth grade, from what I, from what I-
Our first through fifth grade.
Our first through fifth grade. From what I'm hearing, they were all told that they would have to resign and reapply with the district.
No, no, Kelly, no.
You can jump in and just clarify the effect of my exemption, assuming that the board accepts the administration's recommendation. First through five will be identified as a program area. And so the risk is, if Ms. Dowdy is not able to locate spots elsewhere in the district for those, all of those teachers in first through five, and, and many of them will not have them elsewhere. So it would be wise to begin looking for, I know you have a transfer policy and a procedure for applying for transfers on different campuses. And so that's why it's incumbent upon the board to consider this and take action as soon as possible so that the administration can apply the criteria, do all the math, figure out how many teachers it's going to take to service those hundred and seventy-five kids. And on some campuses, they may need all, every single grade level teacher from Carpenter to go over to an existing campus on another one, and they may only need one of three or four teachers. And so they've got to do that work in order to figure out how best to serve these kids. And then once they do that, that's when definitively they can begin having those conversations with teachers at every single grade level to say, "This is what my recommendations will look like in April and this is the result of the application of criteria and you have been identified for elimination and that a boy will have that choice." Um, that may not happen. No one's told after April twenty-seventh. And so many teachers are probably going ahead and beginning that process just out of an abundance of caution and looking for those vacancies and talking to those principals and reaching out, so.
I'm, I'm probably the new to the city, but my son is a tenth grader. And based on your comments, you said that there were three fingers pointing back to the school board. My question is, are we saying, out of all the schools in Nacogdoches ISD, is Carpenter the only one in IR?
No, sir.
So my, my second point would, have they been given, is it the students that we're blaming off? Or have they been given the same resources that all the other campuses have? Is that the problem or is it the kids?
We have three IR campuses currently. They're at different stages. Carpenter and TJR in fifth year and the Fredonia's in fourth year. The look, what we've had to look at for now is why they're calling me, why A.J. Craybill called me, was because what they've been looking at is our, our benchmark score and all the data that we have to send in during the year. We have to send a lot of data into them from testing all year long. They've been gauging based on the growth of kids at Carpenter currently, whether they think they will be able to make enough growth this year by June, that they even have a chance to come out next year. And based on those benchmark scores, they're saying it doesn't look like it's possible. So I've asked, that I want to wait till the June scores come out because that's the end result. They're looking at benchmark scores and making a judgment saying, based on these, it is not, is looking like highly, highly that you will not be able to make enough growth this year and apply it to next year because that would still be too low to come out the end of next year. That's what they're doing, so they have targeted Carpenter.
Okay, so, but my, still, my question is, are we blaming the students? Are we blaming the teachers? Are we blaming the school board? Who are we blaming for the failure? Is it, is the kids not good enough?
No.
Are they not getting the proper teachers? Are they not getting the same funding that you're giving all of the other schools? That's the question that I want to know because I know my son's mother, she went to Carpenter and she, 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 every time he's on the campus, she's saying that she can identify with some of the same things that were there twenty-five years ago. So there's no improvement to the campus? So I'm, I'm just, I'm at, I mean, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to say, if you're improving the campus, I've met some of the other schools, we just moved, so he had to be transferred to camp, to Carpenter. But I can see some of the other schools that have way more resources, way more gardens, way more everything than I see at Carpenter.
You're talking about the physical?
Physical.
Right.
So if it's not getting in the physical, then I could just suppose it's not being learned textbook.
I can,
And computers.
I can tell you that, yeah, I, that the resources, that the monies that we give Carpenter are adequate, in other words, we're giving them, and you might want to speak to that, that we, how we dole the money out is appropriate, just like we do.
I mean, if you want, so we, we can see the scores. So can we see what the bonds are being dispersed?
Sure, absolutely.
The, the deal with Carpenter, like, they've been in IR for six years?
Five years.
Five, but you can't expect one person to change in one year. I mean,
That's, that's right.
It, it takes a while to re-leave.
That's what we're try, that's what we want from TEA is the time. We have to lay in Carp, I'm just going to say, and Shontae, you chime in here, you know the history. Carpenter has gone through, Carpenter was once, as I was told when I got here, the place to be, right? It was an outstanding campus. You had a great leadership, you had excellent teachers. And then it began with a decline of constant change with leadership to begin with. I believe, how many times has Carpenter been changed with leadership? A lot.
I think we've had, what, three principals in the last three years? Four principals, and that's not good.
That's right. The quality, the quality of leadership. Go ahead, Kelly.
I just want to jump in. So I think it's, it's, the board's prerogative to always allow public comment, but I would caution you from engaging in a Q and A, particularly if it dives into or delves into personnel questions, which, you know, I think legitimately, he's, he's asking questions and has concerns about staffing, that possibly your town hall meetings that you discussed might be more appropriate for a Q and A. But to allow, you know, audience members to approach the podium and to, to make public comment as you would at a regular board meeting, I think is certainly the board's prerogative, but I just wanted to kind of give you that caution.
Personnel.
Caution as you continue.
Right. Where is he back there?
Because these are concerns.
If, if I might, um, James, maybe you could address that for us. Or you, do you, do you think you have the resources at Carpenter that our kids need that's on all the other camp, other campuses?
For the most part, with the exception of, this year hiring was a task because of, I had the last minute teaching resigned. And I, I was hiring in June, I mean, in July. So I feel like there were some spots that I didn't have a chance to get is what I wanted to do on the campus.
But money-wise?
Money-wise, yes, the money's there. Uh, because we've had prior to COVID, some of the teachers. But financially, yes, I believe that was it.
I, I want to assure you on behalf of this board that we have approved just about every request every principal had when it comes to resources. Because we, we are for- when it comes to resources, because we, we are for, um, student outcome. And we want them to have the best. So when it comes to resources, we, as a board, we have, we have made sure that they were there.
True.
I just wanna put out, I, I, I think before I got on the board, uh, 'cause I was doing some research, some history on it at the time, but I think the board before I got on the board, which some of these folks have been here, but didn't y'all approve quite a bit of money spent over there, even on the physical outside of Carpenter, trying to change things up at Carpenter?
Was it, what was it, two million?
I remember, I re- I remember seeing some pretty, pretty big expenses in the budget that was, I wasn't part of it, but I remember seeing something about that. I don't know, don't know anything personally about it.
I, I do recall that the board did approve, uh, some construction, although it may not seem like a lot, uh, at the time, uh, if I recall correctly. I don't remember the numbers, but we did approve some changes for the physical part outside. And there has always been a discussion as far as the, the building itself being, uh, improved and so forth through the years. Uh, again, the, the, the main thing at, at those times was the, uh, revenues, uh, that was a, uh, an issue.
Then we tried with bond issue, and that didn't work, so.
Sir, m- I, I would, I would say make, make no excuses. Ultimately, this board is responsible for student outcomes. And if those student outcomes are not where they should be, it's our responsibility to make the changes needed, to get the, the improvement that's needed, to give every child in our community the opportunity they deserve. So in my opinion, the buck stops here.
I would just like to say that I-
Before you get started, I'm probably have to limit the number of questions, 'cause I'm getting some, uh,
Yeah, I see.
I just don't wanna go over a line, 'cause we're, we're dealing with, with legal issues and all kinds of things, so we have to be real careful in what we say and what we do. Knowing that we've gotta, we're here for the kids, but we've also got some real issues that we've gotta be real careful with, that could come back, so we got, we're real limited as to what we can say. I'm gonna live, couple more questions, 'cause these two, and then we're gonna, we're gonna go to, go into what we need to do.
Okay, I have, I have visited Carpenter and been in three meetings. And the visit to Carpenter totally shocked me, because this is twenty seventeen. Their backpacks are hanging outside.
Yeah.
A snake could crawl in them, the bathrooms are outside. So you might have given them twenty million, twenty billion, whatever. I'm just saying what I seen from the library to the campus going around it was totally shocking for me. Totally shocking for me. I can say what I saw did not look good for any child, for any child in twenty seventeen.
Was it last year?
Mr. Swett?
Two years ago.
I would just say is, when you talk about the teacher turnaround, turnaround of teachers, at principals at Carpenter, it seems to me that's one of the main issues that the school board had, and you pointed that out. And to go there year after year at mentor red and helping the kids with their, their side, it's, it, it, it just shows me that the kids don't have a relationship with the teachers, uh, now. Not, with some, it was on the, of the turnaround. So this school board, can this school board work on some kind of, uh, method to help curtail the teacher, principal turnaround, is in the school district as a whole? And that would help.
Right, I agree.
That's awesome.
More focused on th- these kids, 'cause pressure on these children, the pressure outside of school is great. And then when they come to school, they need somebody to love them. And show, uh, so much affection to them to help them focus on what they need to do in school to be successful. If that happened, I, I, I believe it'd be a great turnaround.
Uh, I, I will say this in closing on these comments, is that, um, to this man, I have a special place in my heart for Carpenter. Uh, my wife started her teaching career at Carpenter. I started my teaching career at Carpenter. And my daughter started her teaching career at Carpenter. And both my children went through Carpenter. So Carpenter is pretty special to me. And we, whatever we gotta do to make it right, is what I'm willing to do.
If I might address Ms. Truss Scott's course concern, Ms. Diane, uh, I think it was two years ago, the board, we literally put a brand-new Carpenter, um, on the bond election, but the community said not so at this time. But that was one of our goals, to, to build a brand-new school, uh, at Carpenter.
I believe in my child here.
Right.
All right, for the board, is there any more discussion within the board? Okay. Is this, is this is the time to bring up a motion?
Do we have anything that we need to discuss in executive, or are you trying to do them all at one time now?
Mm-hmm.
You have, uh, questions, um, legal questions about the program change, or if you can go into executive session, and then you can take the action when you come back.
I have, I have a few legal questions.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, is everybody good with that, going to executive session for a little while to come back?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Wait.
You need to read that. I gotta read, what we gotta read.
Say the magic word.
We gotta read the magic. The board will now conduct an executive closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meeting Acts, as is allowed by the Texas Governance Code five-five-one point oh-seven-one and five-five-one point oh-seven-four. No voting will take place in closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. It is now five-oh-five. All right, five-oh-five. Now, we won't go into executive-
It is now five fifty-one. The board is now reconvening into open session at nine fifty-one. Do I have a motion for B?
At five fifty-one.
Five fifty-one, what did I say?
You were talking Reverend Ervin's normal times, nine something. It's five, not nine, yeah.
Do I have a motion for B? Isn't that the first one?
Yes, I think, well...
Who has a motion for B? It's a...
Was it before D, D and E, or the last two?
Oh, that's me. Mr. President, I move to approve the employment of teachers as recommended by administration.
Second?
Second by Ms. Rushing. All those in favor of employment of teachers, raise your right hand. Okay.
Is it me now? Professional?
Huh?
Press mail.
Now a C? Which is...
I think we just did...
The President, I move... Is that the one? Professional, yeah. I move to the, uh, through the employment of professional personnel as recommended by administration.
Second.
Russell, you want it?
I got the last one.
All those in favor of... Now, I believe we're...
It's E.
Four D.
Four D.
With regard to item four D, I move that we accept the interim superintendent's recommendation to implement a program change, which will allow the elimination, curtailment, or reorganization of one or more programs, departments, or school operations, or the modification or reorganization of staffing patterns in a department on a particular campus or district wide.
I second the motion.
Oh, any discussion before we vote? Kind of add the discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Do I have a motion for E?
Mr. President, with regard to item four E, I move that we accept the interim superintendent's recommendations and identify the following as program areas to be affected by the reduction in force due to program change, and direct that Mrs. Dowdy apply the criteria for decisions set forth in policy DFFB local to identify the employees subject to the reduction in force and to recommend proposed non-renewal of those employees' term contracts based on the reduction in force. Carpenter Elementary, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers, Carpenter Elementary reading, math, and behavioral interventionist, curriculum instructional coach, special education resource inclusion teacher, and counselor.
What's second?
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, do I have, are there any other motions?
I move we adjourn.
We are now adjourned at six, at five fifty-four.